I would like to call the Fairfield County Council Regular Meeting to Order, Windsboro, South Carolina, Monday, February the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P. M. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show seven zero. Next, we down to the invocation by Pastor Dylan Pullen from the Redemption Church.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Council, it's my honor this evening to provide the invocation. Let's pray together. Dear gracious heavenly Father, tonight we call upon your name and humility as our Creator and our Savior. Father, I ask that as this council convenes for tonight's meeting, that you would grant them wisdom to guide our future, bravery to overcome any obstacles, and passion to push for a better tomorrow. Father, I ask that you would be with this council tonight as they sit in positions of leadership, yet they are in your eyes humble servants. Grant them their strength and lead them with a heart of humility. Father, help them to trust you more and lean on your everlasting arms. Father, we invite your Spirit of peace to preside over this meeting, and that your will would become clear, that you may direct the future of this county. And it's in the name of your son, Jesus, we do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Pullen. Next, we are down to the approval of minutes for our regular meeting, January the twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show seven zero on approval of minutes for regular meeting, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Next, we are down to public presentations. We'll start with item A, proclamation recognizing retirement of Sharon Ford, nine-one-one dispatcher. Ms. Ford, would you please come up?
A proclamation recognizing the retirement of Sharon Ford from Fairfield County's Emergency Management Division, whereas Sharon Ford began her career in nine-one-one telecommunications with Fairfield County Emergency Management slash E-nine-one-one Department in two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Ford has served Fairfield County as a dedicated nine-one-one dispatcher, shift supervisor, member of the radiological emergency response team, and has participated in and has participated in numerous community outreach events. She has assisted countless citizens utilizing her compassionate nature and positive attitude to treat each caller as if they were a member of her own family. Ms. Ford has been an integral member of the department, and she has made life-changing impacts, not only to the citizens of Fairfield County, but also to her fellow dispatchers. She truly believes in paying it forward and has nurtured many trainees by sharing her experience and knowledge. She is much loved by all who know her, and her presence in nine-one-one dispatch will be dearly missed. Therefore, be it proclaimed that Chairman Doug Pauley, District Five, and the members of the Fairfield County Council would like to recognize and congratulate Sharon Ford on her retirement. Thank you for your years of service to Fairfield County, and we pray God's continued blessings upon you and wish you all the best in your retirement. Signed, Chairman Douglas Pauley and Clerk to Counsel, Dr. Kimberly Roberts.
You want to get a picture? If y'all want to get in the picture, y'all. She's gonna take him. You want her to come up here? Sharon. Sharon. That's her son and her sister. She can come up here after she's finished down there. Sharon, you're not coming up here? She's like, what? Be careful. I ain't gonna help y'all men. Y'all men can do it yourself. Wonderful. Be careful.
Next, we have item five B, a proclamation recognizing retirement of Lee Haney from the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office. If Mr. Haney and his wife would come down?
A proclamation recognizing the retirement of Lieutenant Lee Haney, whereas Lieutenant Lee Haney began his career in law enforcement with the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office in November of nineteen ninety-five. He has since continually served Fairfield County for over twenty-seven years in numerous capacities. He has been assigned to patrol, narcotics, and retired as a lieutenant in the Training Division in January of two thousand and twenty-three. Lieutenant Haney was also a longstanding member of the SRT, the Special Response Team, and the Bloodhound Tracking Team. He was most recently awarded the Matt Peak Award, which is granted annually to a deputy who possesses a great work ethic, a sense of community, and a great attitude. Lieutenant Haney was a dedicated member of the Sheriff's Office and has made a lasting impact through his willingness to share his knowledge and experience, but even more, he was a friend to all who knew him and will be missed dearly. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that Chairman Doug Pauley, District Five, and the members of the Fairfield County Council would like to recognize and congratulate Lieutenant Lee Haney on his retirement. We pray God's continued blessings upon you and wish you all the best in your retirement. Signed, Chairman Doug Pauley and Clerk to Counsel, Dr. Kimberly Roberts.
Randy Bright.
I'm not gonna play shuffleboard with this. We'll just move forward. Jeff is right, though. It should face at a different angle than it has been. A lot of people can't hear. My name's Randy Bright. Something's wrong, if you don't know that. District One, Ridgeway. My biggest issue for tonight's agenda, John and Jeff were spot on. There's many kind of parks. There's mini parks. There's memorial parks. There's car parks. But I assume you're talking about industrial parks in this. But I'd have to assume that because you don't say that. What kind of park is that? But my biggest concern beyond that is the budget. We really blew it last year, came out of the gate slow, well behind because of the inefficiencies in producing a timely audit. Then we then we complicated it by, we didn't have any goals last year. We didn't have any plans last year. We had an old comprehensive plan that nobody paid attention to that actually expired twenty-one, twenty-one. But when the department heads, what's our what are our goals? What are our plans? Where is this county headed? What should we prioritize? When you can't pin that down, when you've got people doing the budget that don't have any clue, it'd be like, alright, let's jump on the ship. I'm not gonna tell you where and how we're gonna go, but you just gotta help guide the ship. That's impossible. And that's why we failed so miserably last year. Just a helter-skelter spending. We wound up spending too much. We wound up not spending enough on a lot of other things. It's because we didn't do the budget right begin with. And part of the other part of the reason by not having any goals, objectives, tangible goals and objectives, is the fact that we we had no definition, really, of where the general what the general fund should do, how should we use it? We had no plan. How should we gain revenue from selling assets, from managing our assets? I've talked about managing our money assets, which is close to sixty million dollars. I can't find anybody in the government that even knows how much interest rate we're getting on that sixty million dollars. It's a rhetorical question I'm asking you. Maybe you've got it now, but I've been trying for months. I don't know. Well, sixty million dollars, one just one percent difference is a whole lot of money. Do the math. We gotta know where we stand, where we're going before we can even begin on this budget. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Now, we are down to item seven, public hearing, A, ordinance eight oh eight.
Two persons signed up to speak, Mr. Chair.
You want to open it? You want to read it first?
Ordinance eight zero eight, an ordinance to appropriate funds received by Fairfield County from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Guaranteed Political Subdivision Fund to be allocated to establish a five-year agreement with Fairfield Behavioral Health Services for use in occurrence with the technical proposed submitted proposal submitted to the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund Board on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, to support the Fairfield opioid response team developed in partnership with the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department, Windsboro Public Safety, Fairfield County EMS, nine-one-one Dispatch, and the Fairfield County Coroner's Office.
Okay, we open this public hearing at six twenty-one P. M. Anybody sign to speak?
Yes, sir. Jeff Schaefer.
I don't mean to be rude to the council people, but I'm not gonna be rude to the citizens. I'm tired of that. What I see up here is an ordinance, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we're giving a five-year program to help people with opioid and drug problems. I don't think anybody here has a problem with that. Those things make sense, but if we were specific about it, this is the third reading. If we were specific about why we're doing it, where it's gonna be done, who's doing it, who will benefit by it, I think everybody here would say, well, yeah, we should definitely do that. But this is the third reading, and I'm at every meeting, and I have not heard specific reasons why we're doing this. And since I can't see the clock, nor am I interested in looking at the clock, I'm just gonna tell you that maybe you should pay attention, especially today when you're looking at the back of my head. And you can see that we're fed up. This doesn't have to be like this. We've had one council session after another, and we're not listening to what the people want. And I hope that tonight we'll get through to you, but I don't think anyone here will disagree with the fact that we should be helping people who've got drug problems, opioids, whatever the hell it is. And a five-year program? Why isn't it ten years? Why aren't we doing this on an ongoing thing? And why aren't we explaining it to the people that we're putting this much money aside, and this is where it will be held, and this is who will help? Thank you.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. I agree with Jeff in the in the sense that there's, hey, it's already the one minute. Nice try, guys. Alright, now we're on. Okay. I'm with Jeff. Like I mentioned before, as far as the budget, like we mentioned every time, like we mentioned about the park, who knows what kind of park we're talking about? What are our goals and objectives with this fifty thousand dollars or whatever money we're going to sink into this? On the surface, it's an extreme problem everywhere in the United States right now. But to just throw money at a problem only compounds that problem. To have a plan and to have specifics in the plan, to have experts compile the plan and let it known to the citizens what you're doing with their money, to have goals, and probably the most important thing, is to have the ability to measure progress. What are our parameters? How are we gonna know if this money's doing good or not? How are we gonna know if our money is worth worthwhile? How are we gonna know what we could be doing better? Any goal and any plan, you just don't set a plan out and follow that plan no matter what happens. There are pitfalls to every plan, so you've got to monitor this plan. You know, we we give money to all kinds of groups as as a county council and have been, but we don't hold them accountable for how they spend it. We don't hold them accountable for progress. We don't have hold them accountable for having goals and objectives and meeting those goals and objectives. We don't measure their progress. We're just throwing money down the tubes if we don't. And everyone asks me, how can Fairfield County be one of the have one of the wealthiest income streams per capita in the state and have all these wanting needs? That's a major reason. It's lack of planning. It's a lack of follow-up, and it's a lack of communication with the community about where we're headed, why, and how. This isn't just, you guys just aren't running this county. If you are on your own, there's a problem. You need partnership with the community, and to get partnership, to get support with the community, you've got to communicate to the community and get specifics down. I can't judge this bill at all. How could anyone judge this bill at all? We're throwing money away at opioid crisis. The intent is good, but it's made bad by the plan. We've talked before, failure to plan is a plan to fail. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Now, we are down to item seven, public hearing, A, ordinance eight oh eight.
Two persons signed up to speak, Mr. Chair.
You want to open it? You want to read it first?
Oh, sure. Ordinance eight zero eight, an ordinance to appropriate funds received by Fairfield County from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Guaranteed Political Subdivision Fund to be allocated to establish a five-year agreement with Fairfield Behavioral Health Services for use in occurrence with the technical proposed submitted proposal submitted to the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund Board on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, to support the Fairfield opioid response team developed in partnership with the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department, Windsboro Public Safety, Fairfield County EMS, nine-one-one Dispatch, and the Fairfield County Coroner's Office.
Okay, we open this public hearing at six twenty-one P. M. Anybody sign to speak?
Yes, sir. Jeff Schaefer.
I don't mean to be rude to the council people, but I'm not gonna be rude to the citizens. I'm tired of that. What I see up here is is an ordinance, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we're giving a five-year program to help people with opioid and drug problems. I don't think anybody here has a problem with that. Those things make sense, but if we were specific about it, this is the third reading. If we were specific about why we're doing it, where it's gonna be done, who's doing it, who will benefit by it, I think everybody here would say, well, yeah, we should definitely do that. But this is the third reading, and I'm at every meeting, and I have not heard specific reasons why we're doing this. And since I can't see the clock, nor am I interested in looking at the clock, I'm just gonna tell you that maybe you should pay attention, especially today when you're looking at the back of my head. And you can see that we're fed up. This 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 doesn't have to be like this. We've had one council session after another, and we're not listening to what the people want. And I hope that tonight we'll get through to you, but I don't think anyone here will disagree with the fact that we should be helping people who've got drug problems, opioids, whatever the hell it is. And a five-year program? Why isn't it ten years? Why aren't we doing this on an ongoing thing? And why aren't we explaining it to the people that we're putting this much money aside, and this is where it will be held, and this is who will help? Thank you.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. I agree with Jeff in the in the sense that there's, hey, it's already the one minute. Nice try, guys. Alright, now we're on. Okay. I'm with Jeff. Like I mentioned before, as far as the budget, like we mentioned every time, like we mentioned about the park, who knows what kind of park we're talking about? What are our goals and objectives with this fifty thousand dollars or whatever money we're going to sink into this? On the surface, it's an extreme problem everywhere in the United States right now. But to just throw money at a problem only compounds that problem. To have a plan and to have specifics in the plan, to have experts compile the plan and let it known to the citizens what you're doing with their money, to have goals, and probably the most important thing, is to have the ability to measure progress. What are our parameters? How are we gonna know if this money's doing good or not? How are we gonna know if our money is worth worthwhile? How are we gonna know what we could be doing better? Any goal and any plan, you just don't set a plan out and follow that plan no matter what happens. There are pitfalls to every plan, so you've got to monitor this plan. You know, we we give money to all kinds of groups as as a county council and have been, but we don't hold them accountable for how they spend it. We don't hold them accountable for progress. We don't have hold them accountable for having goals and objectives and meeting those goals and objectives. We don't measure their progress. We're just throwing money down the tubes if we don't. And everyone asks me, how can Fairfield County be one of the have one of the wealthiest income streams per capita in the state and have all these wanting needs? That's a major reason. It's lack of planning. It's a lack of follow-up, and it's a lack of communication with the community about where we're headed, why, and how. This isn't just, you guys just aren't running this county. If you are on your own, there's a problem. You need partnership with the community, and to get partnership, to get support with the community, you've got to communicate to the community and get specifics down. I can't judge this bill at all. How could anyone judge this bill at all? We're throwing money away at opioid crisis. The intent is good, but it's made bad by the plan. We've talked before, failure to plan is a plan to fail. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. We close this public hearing at six twenty-seven P. M. Next, we are down to number eight, ordinance resolutions and orders. The first one is first reading by title only. Ordinance number eight zero nine, an ordinance of Fairfield County Council developing a multi-county park with Richland County, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement governing the multi-county park, authorizing the inclusion of certain property located in Richland County into in the multi-county park, and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. There is no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show seven zero on first reading of ordinance eight zero nine. Now, we are.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. Would it be appropriate for an explanation?
No, first reading.
Okay, my bad. I forgot about that.
Now, we are down to eight B, third and final reading of ordinance number eight zero eight.
An ordinance to appropriate funds received by Fairfield County from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Guaranteed Political Subdivision Fund to be allocated to establish a five-year agreement with Fairfield Behavioral Health Services for use in occurrence with the technical proposed submitted proposal submitted to the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund Board on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, to support the Fairfield opioid response team developed in partnership with the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department, Windsboro Public Safety, Fairfield County EMS, nine-one-one dispatch, and the Fairfield County Coroner's Office.
Okay, we open this public hearing at six twenty-one P. M. Anybody sign to speak?
Yes, sir. Jeff Schaefer.
I don't mean to be rude to the council people, but I'm not gonna be rude to the citizens. I'm tired of that. What I see up here is is an ordinance, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we're giving a five-year program to help people with opioid and drug problems. I don't think anybody here has a problem with that. Those things make sense, but if we were specific about it, this is the third reading. If we were specific about why we're doing it, where it's gonna be done, who's doing it, who will benefit by it, I think everybody here would say, well, yeah, we should definitely do that. But this is the third reading, and I'm at every meeting, and I have not heard specific reasons why we're doing this. And since I can't see the clock, nor am I interested in looking at the clock, I'm just gonna tell you that maybe you should pay attention, especially today when you're looking at the back of my head. And you can see that we're fed up. This 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 doesn't have to be like this. We've had one council session after another, and we're not listening to what the people want. And I hope that tonight we'll get through to you, but I don't think anyone here will disagree with the fact that we should be helping people who've got drug problems, opioids, whatever the hell it is. And a five-year program? Why isn't it ten years? Why aren't we doing this on an ongoing thing? And why aren't we explaining it to the people that we're putting this much money aside, and this is where it will be held, and this is who will help? Thank you.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. I agree with Jeff in the in the sense that there's, hey, it's already the one minute. Nice try, guys. Alright, now we're on. Okay. I'm with Jeff. Like I mentioned before, as far as the budget, like we mentioned every time, like we mentioned about the park, who knows what kind of park we're talking about? What are our goals and objectives with this fifty thousand dollars or whatever money we're going to sink into this? On the surface, it's an extreme problem everywhere in the United States right now. But to just throw money at a problem only compounds that problem. To have a plan and to have specifics in the plan, to have experts compile the plan and let it known to the citizens what you're doing with their money, to have goals, and probably the most important thing, is to have the ability to measure progress. What are our parameters? How are we gonna know if this money's doing good or not? How are we gonna know if our money is worth worthwhile? How are we gonna know what we could be doing better? Any goal and any plan, you just don't set a plan out and follow that plan no matter what happens. There are pitfalls to every plan, so you've got to monitor this plan. You know, we we give money to all kinds of groups as as a county council and have been, but we don't hold them accountable for how they spend it. We don't hold them accountable for progress. We don't have hold them accountable for having goals and objectives and meeting those goals and objectives. We don't measure their progress. We're just throwing money down the tubes if we don't. And everyone asks me, how can Fairfield County be one of the have one of the wealthiest income streams per capita in the state and have all these wanting needs? That's a major reason. It's lack of planning. It's a lack of follow-up, and it's a lack of communication with the community about where we're headed, why, and how. This isn't just, you guys just aren't running this county. If you are on your own, there's a problem. You need partnership with the community, and to get partnership, to get support with the community, you've got to communicate to the community and get specifics down. I can't judge this bill at all. How could anyone judge this bill at all? We're throwing money away at opioid crisis. The intent is good, but it's made bad by the plan. We've talked before, failure to plan is a plan to fail. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. We close this public hearing at six twenty-seven P. M. Next, we are down to number eight, ordinance resolutions and orders. The first one is first reading by title only. Ordinance number eight zero nine, an ordinance of Fairfield County Council developing a multi-county park with Richland County, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement governing the multi-county park, authorizing the inclusion of certain property located in Richland County into in the multi-county park, and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. There is no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show seven zero on first reading of ordinance eight zero nine. Now, we are.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. Would it be appropriate for an explanation?
No, first reading.
Okay, my bad. I forgot about that.
Now, we are down to eight B, third and final reading of ordinance number eight zero eight.
An ordinance to appropriate funds received by Fairfield County from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Guaranteed Political Subdivision Fund to be allocated to establish a five-year agreement with Fairfield Behavioral Health Services for use in occurrence accordance with the technical proposal submitted to the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund Board on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, to support the Fairfield opioid response team developed in partnership with the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department, Windsboro Public Safety, Fairfield County EMS, nine-one-one dispatch, and the Fairfield County Coroner's Office.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gibb.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the ordinance of number eight oh eight and incorporate the edit listing in the amended ordinance number eight oh eight contained in our agenda package to change the name of Fairfield County Sheriff's Department.
Helter-skelter spending. We wound up spending too much. We wound up not spending enough on a lot of other things. It's because we didn't do the budget right begin with. And part of the, the other part of the reason by not having any goals, objectives, tangible goals and objectives is the fact that we, we had no definition really of where the general, what the general fund should do, how should we use it? We had no plan. How should we gain revenue from selling assets, from managing our assets? I've talked about managing our money assets, which is close to $60 million. I can't find anybody in the government that even knows how much interest rate we're getting on that $60 million. It's a rhetorical question I'm asking you. Maybe you've got it now, but I've been trying for months. I don't know. Well, $60 million, one, just 1% difference is a whole lot of money. Do the math. We gotta know where we stand, where we're going before we can even begin on this budget. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Now we are down to item seven, public hearing, A, ordinance 808.
Two persons signed up to speak, Mr. Chair. You want to open it?
You want to read it first?
Oh, sure. Ordinance 808, an ordinance to appropriate funds received by Fairfield County from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Guaranteed Political Subdivision Fund to be allocated to establish a five-year agreement with Fairfield Behavioral Health Services for use in occurrence with the technical proposed submitted, proposal submitted to the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund Board on November 16th, 2022, to support the Fairfield opioid response team developed in partnership with the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department, Winsboro Public Safety, Fairfield County EMS, 911 Dispatch, and the Fairfield County Coroner's Office.
Okay, we open this public hearing at 6:21 PM. Anybody sign to speak?
Yes, sir.
I don't mean to be rude to the council people, but I'm not going to be rude to the citizens. I'm tired of that. What I see up here is, is an ordinance, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we're giving a five-year program to help people with opioid and drug problems. I don't think anybody here has a problem with that. Those things make sense, but if we were specific about it, this is the third reading, if we were specific about why we're doing it, where it's going to be done, who's doing it, who will benefit by it, I think everybody here would say, well, yeah, we should definitely do that. But this is the third reading, and I'm at every meeting, and I have not heard specific reasons why we're doing this. And since I can't see the clock, nor am I interested in looking at the clock, I'm just going to tell you that maybe you should pay attention, especially today when you're looking at the back of my head. And you can see that we're fed up. This, this, this doesn't have to be like this. We've had one council session after another, and we're not listening to what the people want. And I hope that tonight we'll get through to you, but I don't think anyone here will disagree with the fact that we should be helping people who've got drug problems, opioids, whatever the hell it is. And a five-year program, why isn't it 10 years? Why aren't we doing this on an ongoing thing? And why aren't we explaining it to the people that we're putting this much money aside, and this is where it will be held, and this is who will help? Thank you.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. I agree with Jeff in the, in the sense that there's, hey, it's already the one minute. Nice try, guys. All right, now we're on. Okay. I'm with Jeff. Like I mentioned before, as far as the budget, like we mention every time, like we mentioned about the park, who knows what kind of park we're talking about. What are our goals and objectives with this $50,000 or whatever money we're going to sink into this? On the surface, it's an extreme problem everywhere in the United States right now. But to just throw money at a problem only compounds that problem. To have a plan and to have specifics in the plan, to have experts compile the plan and let it known to the citizens what you're doing with their money, to have goals, and probably the most important thing is to have the ability to measure progress. What are our parameters? How are we going to know if this money's doing good or not? How are we going to know if our money is worth, worthwhile? How are we going to know what we could be doing better? Any goal and any plan, you just don't set a plan out and follow that plan no matter what happens. There are pitfalls to every plan. So you've got to monitor this plan. You know, we, we give money to all kinds of groups as, as a county council and have been, but we don't hold them accountable for how they spend it. We don't hold them accountable for progress. We don't have, hold them accountable for having goals and objectives and meeting those goals and objectives. We don't measure their progress. We're just throwing money down the tubes if we don't. And everyone asks me, how can Fairfield County be one of the, have one of the wealthiest income streams per capita in the state and have all these wanting needs? That's a major reason. It's lack of planning. It's a lack of follow-up, and it's a lack of communication with the community about where we're headed, why, and how. This isn't just, you guys just aren't running this county. If you are on your own, there's a problem. You need partnership with the community, and to get partnership, to get support with the community, you've got to communicate to the community and get specifics down. I can't judge this bill at all. How could anyone judge this bill at all? We're throwing mon, money away at opioid crisis. The intent is good, but it's made bad by the plan. We've talked before, failure to plan is a plan to fail. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. We close this public hearing at 6:27 PM. Next, we are down to number eight, ordinance resolutions and orders. The first one is first reading by title only. Ordinance number 809, an ordinance of Fairfield County Council developing a multi-county park with Richland County, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement governing the multi-county park, authorizing the inclusion of certain property located in Richland County into, in the multi-county park, and other related matters. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and seconded. There is no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show seven to zero on first reading of ordinance 809. Now we are...
Mr. Chair, excuse me. Would it be appropriate for an explanation?
No, first reading.
Okay. My bad. I forgot about that.
Now we are down to eight B, third and final reading of ordinance number 808.
An ordinance to appropriate funds received by Fairfield County from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Guaranteed Political Subdivision Fund to be allocated to establish a five-year agreement with Fairfield Behavioral Health Services for use in occurrence accordance with the technical proposal submitted to the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund Board on November 16th, 2022, to support the Fairfield opioid response team developed in partnership with the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department, Winsboro Public Safety, Fairfield County EMS, 911 Dispatch, and the Fairfield County Coroner's Office.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gibb?
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the ordinance of number 801, 808 and incorporate the edit listing in the amended ordinance number 808 contained in our agenda package to change the name of Fairfield County Sheriff Department to Fairfield County Sheriff Office.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, any dis, any discussion on the amended motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the amended motion reflect seven zero. Now we're back down to the regular motion. Can I get a approval of that motion?
So move.
Any, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Morgan, would you explain that to us exactly? And is there going to be some accountability? Is somebody going to be held accountable for how this money is spent?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Marangin and members of council. What you have before you this evening is ordinance 808. And by way of background, South Carolina participated, and Fairfield County was also involved in a lawsuit involving the opioid crisis in which there's establishment of litigation that said that opioids are being over-prescribed. And there was a settlement and ended up, funds were received by the state of South Carolina. Now, the General Assembly passed a specific law, it's in South Carolina Code 11-58-10, which talks about the opioid recovery fund and then establishes certain guidelines and programs by which those funds are given to particular counties, Fairfield, for example, and then how are they to be distributed and used. And so in order to answer your question, the funds will be used, and what this ordinance does is authorize as Fairfield County to take its allocation of funds and work with the already established Fairfield County opioid response team, and then use a guaranteed partner, in this instance for Fairfield Behavioral Health Services. They were the ones who worked with the team members and submitted documentation to the state. And so the state has to approve what the plan for the expenditure for the funds is. That's already been done. And then what happens is, is the state will then also manage and make sure that those funds that the council is authorizing for use are spent properly. So there is oversight through the state board.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Those in favor of third and final reading ordinance, ordinance number 808? All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on third and final reading of ordinance 808. We are down to C, resolution number 2023-02, a resolution by Fairfield County Council authorizing Fairfield County to use local assistance and tribal consistency funds to replace Medic One in the Fairfield County Emergency Service Department and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do. So it says that $300,000 is, is appropriated towards the cost of Medic One with the replacement. It's going to be 328,000, but Fairfield County got a $50,000 local assistance and tribal consistency fund from the government. So the difference there is like 22,000. Can that 22,000 difference be used for, because that's an excess? Can that be used for something like some other stuff to help other EMS vehicles?
We're going to come to council later on with some requests or recommendations for how the remaining amount is to be used, because also in the upcoming year, we're supposed to get another $50,000. But it stipulated how we can use the money. There are some eligible costs that we can use it for, so we'll bring that back to council to discuss.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the other question is taking a look at the fact that, I guess, a stricter power loader, load system needs to be attached to that, and it was said that the EMS would, would make that attachment and it wouldn't be included in this cost. Do they already have one of these, or do they still have to purchase one? And where would that money come from?
I can answer that. We already have that. It's on one of the current vehicles, so we're going to be, because we can utilize that, we were able to receive the discount on the new ambulance.
Any further discussion?
I do. I'm sorry. Also down here, it says in a January, the council requested the $50,000, but that the American Rescue Plan appropriated $2 billion to be eligible for revenue sharing counties. Are we going, is $50,000 all we're getting, or is any more of that $2 billion that we can get? Did we apply for something else?
No. If, the local assistance tribal consistency funds, the federal government had their own allocation of how much money each county got, is based on the amount of kind of federal lands that you have within the county. So Fairfield County was allocated to receive 50,000 in this fiscal year and 50,000 in the next fiscal year. So it, it wasn't something that we applied for, it was just our allocation based off the federal government's.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. Now we are down to number nine, board and commission minutes for information only. We will do all of these at one time unless there's objection from council. The Aaronautis Commission, November the 15th, 2022. The Planning Commission, December the 8th, 2022. And Disabilities and Special Needs, November the 18th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. There's no board and commission appointments, no old business. We are down to 12A new business, a revised 2023 county council meeting dates and budget calendar. This is a action item. There was...
So, go ahead.
Go ahead. You can make a motion.
Yeah. So move.
Well, let me put on the record, there was a date scheduled for April the 18th, and unless council has an objection, we will move it to April the 19th. And there was a date scheduled for May the 2nd, which will be moved to May the 3rd. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Any discussion?
Yes. Chair, I would, I mean, we can agree to change this date, but I don't think that we should make it a, you know, so, do it this time and do it this time only, because if we continue to do this, we will always have changes going on. So we have, from, from this day forward, let's just make sure that this is a, what date we come on, let's just stick with that date, if that's okay with the rest of the group.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree. I just, I'm okay with this, this change, but I think you set the dates and the time, and there, there are going to be occasions where different people can't make meetings. I understand that, but we can't satisfy everybody all the time. So I think you need to set them, and everybody try to make them all the best you can. So, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, can we possibly, before we set this, these work session dates, see if there's some dates that any of the council can't do it in the future? You know, there's only seven of us, so...
Yes, ma'am. I will try to get with Dr. Roberts and Ms. Williams and Ms. Johnson going forward to go over the dates and send it out to council to see if any council members have any objection to the dates. All in favor of the revised budget calendar dates and county council meeting dates? All opposed? Let the record reflect seven to zero on revising the dates of the county council meeting dates and the budget calendar. Now we are down to number 13, the county administrators' report.
Good evening, council. Item A, recognition of public works director Jonathan Burrows and staff. Jonathan, and if you have any staff, would you stand, please? I received a letter from Chief Deputy Brad Douglas regarding Jonathan Burrows and his staff. I would like to read it, if you don't mind. Captain Jeff Tabbert has submitted a commendation form regarding several instances in which you and your staff have provided assistance to the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office over the past few months. Most recently, you and your staff assisted our investigators in recovering a stolen camper that was well off the roadway and that our office did not have the capabilities to recover. Because you offered your staff services with your professional experience and resource capabilities, your department was able to help us recover this stolen property. Had you, excuse me, had you not been able to assist us, we would have had no other option than to contact a professional, professional tow service, which would have proven very costly to the county. I'm proud of the professional working relationship that we have with you and your department. It is a collaborative effort such as this that makes government operations more efficient to the ultimate benefit of our taxpaying citizens. And he asks that we please relay our most sincere thanks to your staff, and please contact us if we can ever be of assistance to you. So to Director Burrows and staff, I would also like to sincerely thank you for going above and beyond what was required of you to assist another department and our taxpayers. Again, thanks to Mr. Director Burrows and his staff. Next item is the county council workshop overview, which will be done by Ms. Williams.
All right. Fairfield County Council held a planning workshop at Midland Technical College Northeast Campus on January 31st, 2023. During the workshop, Josh Rose with the South Carolina Association of Counties presented information on the council administrator form of government, and John Deloche presented the rules of parliamentary procedures to county council. Following these presentations, county council received updates from interim county administrator Laura Johnson, the county's economic development director Anne Broadwater, and the county's finance director Anne Bass. The session wrapped up with county council discussing their priorities for the upcoming budget year. The work session helps administration set priorities as we go into the next budget session. It gives direction for the departments so that we can better plan for the services we like to provide to our citizens. And we had those first budget work sessions starting this week with the departments where we can relay the information that council listed as priorities during that work session with them as well. So we just wanted to update the citizens about that work session, and if any council members have anything else to say about that, we just feel free to do so.
Mr. Chair, council and public, I would like to say on, that I felt like the workshop was a, was real beneficial. We were able to discuss a lot of things that, that I think is important for, for the growth and the betterment of Fairfield County. We still, we've got a tough road to, to go. There's a lot of things that, that we need to do in order to better this county, but I feel like at our workshop, we were very open with each other and we had great discussion. And so I'm looking forward to doing better as far as Fairfield, Fairfield County's concerned.
Sorry, council. The next item is the revised council reimbursement policy. This is an action item. Council, you received the draft policy of the expense reimbursement. And again, this is a council policy, it's not an administration policy, so any changes or revisions or edits that need to be made, I will be happy to do so. Because you received a cell phone and Surface Pro, the expense reimbursement policy had to be revised and updated.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we move forward with these changes. I feel like it's something we need to do.
I second it.
It's, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, it would be appropriate to amend, amend the motion on the floor for this reimbursement policy. I'd like to add that, just to be clear, that, that all requests for reimbursement that are turned in late will be denied reimbursement.
Mr. Chair.
I think he, can he get a second? All in favor of Mr. Ruth's amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
I mean...
I oppose.
Or let the record reflect five two. You, you was against that? Okay. Let the record reflect five two. Now back to the regular motion. Ms. Green.
Okay, I'd like discussion on this. There are a number of things that are inconsistent in these statements, and I think that we certainly should make sure that if we're doing a policy, that it is comprehensive. And I'd like to basically mention a couple of things to the general public. In-county mileage is one of the topics that was discussed in this draft, and I, I think it probably should read, in-county mileage will not be reimbursed for ceremonial events such as ribbon cuttings, dedications, or recognition events, constituent visits, meetings, or Fairfield County Committee and intergovernmental meetings. I think all of those things need to be specified so that we know exactly what is covered and what's not covered. Also, missing from this is all office supplies must be ordered through the county, through the clerk of council. That is going to be something that you really are looking for as a policy. Or you should say, if that's not going to be the case, you should say that no supplies, no supply reimbursements will be allowed. So either or. I think that in many instances, there are inconsistent statements here. I think that we did not follow the same format as was used in the past, that we did not include anything that basically takes a look at IRS, PIBA, or any of the other kinds of things, governmental things that should be included when you revise a policy. And in taking a look at it, hearing from others, and today with the Surface Pros that we have, internet access is not built into the Surface Pros. Internet access is built into the phones. So say, for instance, if you're going to do a document, are we sending it to our phones? Or how are we making sure that we craft a document that we want to circulate? We can't do it on the Surface Pro, we have to do it on the phone. So that in and of itself is a cumbersome process. So I think we have to take a look at whether or not, how internet is, is handled in this policy as well. So I would simply ask that we really take, take a look whether we table this and have more discussions to move forward.
Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Were these telephones purchased out of a different, a new account, or how were they purchased?
Ms. Williams.
They were purchased out of the current account where we have allocated for internet and phone service. I don't have the exact number in front of me. I went over that during the workshop, but we currently budget close to 19,000 for internet and phone, but by switching to the phone services. Thank you. 19,020 is what the current internet and phone budget is, but by switching to these, it'll only, it'll cost us less than $4,000 a year for all seven cell phones.
So I guess the next question becomes, you know, how, how do we handle internet since it's only on our phones?
Ms. Williams, do you want to comment on that?
Well, the phones, yes, the phones do have the network connectivity to it. The Surface, you have to have a Wi-Fi signal in order to connect to Wi-Fi. So if you are in a loc, if you are... The cell phones have the connectivity, network connectivity, so they do have the, either 4G or 5G, depending on the area you're in. You can also connect to Wi-Fi if Wi-Fi is available. The surfaces do not have 4G or 5G network connectivity like a cellphone does, so you would need Wi-Fi connectivity. So, you would need Wi-Fi connectivity. So, for instance, if there's Wi-Fi in the building, or Wi-Fi at your house, then you can connect to the Wi-Fi and use the Surface to connect to the internet, but it does not have four G or five G internet coverage like the cell phones do.
Mr. Morgan, on the proper wording of the council reimbursement policy, just want to get your clarification on the proper wording in, in what council can do concerning the reimbursement policy.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'm going to try to answer that. And, and I've stated this before, a, a policy that's determined by this council can include pretty much any type of issues that they want, as long as they're legal. And obviously, it's a longstanding law in South Carolina that you can't use public funds for a private good or a private individual business, et cetera. So, there are instances, and I think Ms. Johnson, with her financial background, could possibly talk a little bit more about, like Ms. Green's concerns as for IRS and what, what constitutes as being a reimbursable expense for mileage. You know, for example, the IRS, they change that mileage amount every year, sometimes inside of a year based upon what the economy's doing. I can personally recall a few years back that the IRS prevailing rate changed multiple times inside of one year. So, if there's a specific question, I'll be happy to try to look more into it. And I'm not trying to be evasive here, but if, if there's something specific a question, I'll be happy to address that.
Ms. Johnson.
Excuse me, council. On your old policy, it did talk about taxation, but that pertained to commuter mileage. So, anybody had, that had commuter mileage from this building to their home and back is considered commuting. So, that is not considered business miles. So, we, for anyone that claimed that, it went on their payroll. And so, that's how it got taxed. And in the past, the mileage rate has been included on the old form. I didn't put what the exact mileage rate was, because like, like Mr. Morgan said, the IRS changes it every year, sometimes twice a year. So, if we keep putting it on the form, then finance will constantly have to update that form. So, if we just put the prevailing mileage rate, then that would take care of it.
Is it also true that we used how, we also stated in this policy how our reimbursement accounts were payable?
It said on the old form that all travel business miles will be reimbursed through accounts payable. That's basically just the finance department.
Yeah, but it was stated on the policy so that it was known throughout exactly where everything stood in terms of.
Well, the policy that I received, it didn't have the list of the account numbers on, on this particular old policy that I have.
No, it doesn't have a list of account numbers. I'm saying it identified the account. In other words.
Yes, ma'am.
When we have something that's nebulous, and you know, I wish the public could have seen this draft, which is very, very nebulous, you know, in terms of its specificity, you know, I think that, you know, we, we can do better in making sure that we're comprehensive in what we state.
And like I've stated several times before, Ms. Green, this is a council policy. It can be changed. You all can write it, put anything you want in it. So, it's really not an administration policy, and we don't have the last say so. It's whatever council desires.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of adopting the revised council reimbursement policy. All opposed?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the revised council reimbursement policy, four to three, in favor, four to three. Next, we are down to.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, could I, just for, just for clarification, the reason I included the, the, I wanted to add that, that late reimbursement to the policy is just because I don't think it's fair to finance to have late turn-ins.
It's, it's already been voted on in.
Right, I'm just, just my.
Just to clarify, it was always thirty days, but when COVID hit, it was an exception to the rule. I just want to throw that in.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Ruth, thank you. Now, we are down to thirteen D, the local accommodations and hospitality reimbursement policy.
Counsel, this is just for information only. We've written remittance procedures for the hospitality tax payments. I think three recipients have been approved thus far. This is just a description of, of the items that we're going to request from each of the entities before we reimburse them for their projects. So, any contracts, any invoices, any other, any other additional information that we deem necessary before a check is cut from finance. And it also, excuse me, it also states in here that if they overspend the amount allocated, that that's just the maximum amount they would get. And if they underspend, we only going to pay for the amount of the project. So, if it's seventy-five thousand and they only spend seventy-three, then they, they don't get the other two thousand. So, this is just for information only.
I have a question, Ms. Laura. How much money is in this hospitality tax?
At last count, it was a little over four hundred thousand.
And where does this come from?
Tony.
All right, hospitality tax is, there's, it's known as the H tax, and that is, was passed by ordinance, I believe, number seven twenty-five back in 2019. And that is the additional up to three percent that can be charged for hospitality, lodging, so on and so forth. And then those funds have to be expended on particular projects that are outlined, that are basically tourism related. They're driven to try to create additional tourism dollars to come into Fairfield County.
Okay, how much is in our balance now? Four hundred thousand?
At last count, four hundred thousand.
So, that, that's all that can be in there, and you have to spend it down, or it can grow?
No, ma'am, it's, it's growing. That's just last count. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, the next item is the County Council Monthly Budget Report. It's included in your packet. I've just decided to start putting your monthly budget reports in your packet, so you can review those at your leisure, and if you have any questions on any of the specific line items, just send me an email. Okay, and the next item, F, is the Audit Update. I've spoken with the auditors, and they're still on schedule to present to council March thirteenth.
Okay, next, we are down to fourteen, Clerk of Council's report. We have none. Ms. Williams, Ms. Johnson, thank you for the County Administrator's report. Clerk of Council's report, none. We are down to fifteen, second public comment session. Anybody signed to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Jimmy Ray Douglas.
Hello, council. Welcome back, Mr. Morgan and Ms. Johnson. Transparency is an important word for the Fairfield County Council. And now, we have a council that can be. There are three votes to pass the ordinance, and I asked it to be transparent, explained before the first vote, so the council and the people in audits will know what I was voting on. J.R. Green became Superintendent of Fairfield County Schools in 2012, replacing Dr. Willey. Dr. Green, in his speeches, always made a point to let everyone know that he didn't use any of the taxpayer's money for the schools, because he received ample money from sixty percent of V.C. summer nuclear plant, the state, and the U.S. government. In 2018, what I consider an illegal loan got thirty-four mils for the Carriff Center. J.R. Green cannot say he has not used taxpayer money anymore. When Dr. Willey left, he had eight hundred ninety-six, eight hun, nine hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in his reserve account. Since Dr. Green has been getting three point four mils extra each year, now has around over twenty million dollars in reserve. Chairman Polly needs to have his stop by getting the Fairfield County Council to pass an ordinance to stop this withdrawal through the Auditor's Office. Senator John Martin and Representative Tim Wilkes passed a bill in both chambers to prevent the school system from raising taxes more than three mils or cost of living, whichever is less. Our finance department needs to use the law that was passed and find out how much money the schools need to return to Fairfield County. Fairfield County Council passed a ordinance to charge what we thought was fare on vehicles each year, ten dollars for cars and fifteen dollars for trucks. This money was to be used only for repairing paved Fairfield County roads. I asked Administrator Joseph, Joseph Taylor for information about this account, and after four tenths, Anne Bass sent me all the info I wanted. It was the amount of money in the account from the start, what repairs and what director authorized the charges that, when I received the printout, and I asked one of the coroners to help me audit the papers, and found well over two hundred thousand dollars had been misspent, and Mr. Taylor said they would have to replace the money in this account. Recently, this account has been closed, and close to five hundred thousand dollars is missing. I asked the, the council to persuade, to persuade Attorney Morgan to check into what happened to this money and bring charges if needed. Alliance Engineering was hired to pave roads and build two bridges on county-owned land for industrial sites. We had already done a lot of heavy equipment work on these sites. It rained a couple of weeks, the roads and bridges were in disrepair, and Mr. Taylor and the county had to sue Alliance Engineering. Alliance promised several times it never did.
Mr. Douglas, Mr. Douglas, your, your time's up. Thank you.
Kathy Falk.
Ms. Chair, if we may, can we get the podium turned back around? Are they supposed to be addressing now, so?
Mr. Dwayne, you mind turning the podium back around?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Hang on. What, no. This, hold on a minute. Lord. Okay. Hi. My name is Kathy Falk. I live in Fairfield County. I'm the president of the Hoof and Paw Benevolent Society. I wanted to come and say hello to the new council, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It's been a lot of business here tonight, and I, I'm going to ask you guys to take a deep breath and sort of shift gears a little tiny bit with me, because I often wonder, and can everybody hear me? Is that, everybody can hear me back there? I often wonder what I should say when I come to talk to council that would be meaningful. And so, tonight, just tonight, I'm going to speak from my heart. Historically, society benefits greatly from our relationship with animals. Dogs especially are used for so many services. Our devoted companions, our therapy dogs, our emotional support dogs, our police dogs, our search and rescue dogs, our military dogs, seeing eye dogs, and so much more. I have never understood why society does not take care of our beloved animals, dogs, cats, horses, better than we do. Even when we have the opportunity to provide laws, ordinances, guidelines to our community, we fall short. We allow people to behave irresponsibly, and then, when our dogs and cats end up in a municipal shelter, our municipal shelter, they sometimes are still not cared for properly because of the facility. We all know, and many of us agree, that we need a new animal shelter in Fairfield County. Even though we know the need is great, somehow it is always put on the back burner. We need to teach our community and our children responsible pet ownership that begins with us. We need to strengthen our ordinances that will address and solve problems, and have a shelter that reflects our beliefs. I'm going to close, leaving you with a thought, if you'll let me just finish this brief thought. I would hate to have to explain to my child or my grandchild what happens to a pet when they get lost. How did they get to that shelter in the first place while they wait, wondering if anyone is coming for them? Thank you.
John Jones.
Sorry, council, about my phone ringing and everything. I'm not a technology guy. In fact, I hate technology, and I don't know how to turn it off, so. Anyhow, I agree with you, ma'am. I'm a cat man. And ma'am, I like the way you think. I'm glad you're on, council. That being said, just getting back to some of the things that we've gone over tonight, thirteen D hospitality, because there's four hundred thousand dollars in there, doesn't necessarily mean we got to spend it. A year ago, it'd be a scurry to spend four hundred thousand dollars. Put it to work where it needs to be. And one of the biggest things, well, actually, three, police, fire, medical. We don't have a, a, a full-time fire department over at Jenkinsville. Got a nice firehouse, got nice engines and everything. There's generally one guy in there, and that's it. If you wanted to save money, you could have fire EMS trained people. Two birds, one stone. Three people on a shift, one person would stay behind to be the dispatch, the other two would go out in response. Money well spent. Something to think about. Then the other thing is, I want to make sure that it's well understood that you were hired. You weren't elected to govern and lord over us, you were hired to do a job. This, just like the budget in this county, it's not your money. It's the people's money. And it's your job as county council to find the best ways to spend that money and put it to use for the entire county. Doesn't mean District one, two, three, four, five, whatever. The entire county. That's your job. Police, fire, medical. You're hired to do a job, and all the money that's in this council treasury is not your money. I look forward to seeing what you guys do this year. Looks like we got a good group. Thanks for your time.
Jeff Schaefer.
I'm used to getting thrown out. I wrote an email, and I addressed it to every one of these council members last week, no, two weeks ago, on the thirty-first. And the note simply requested to turn this podium around permanently and address the concerns of the citizens about their bylaws and what they're going to be doing. My last line in the letter was, and I quote, "I sent this to every council member, and I'd like to..." I'd like to hear you respond regardless if I'm in your district or not." One person wrote back to me the very next day. It was articulate, specific, intelligent response, telling me that all my concerns will be addressed on January 31st. Meaning, and they were. In fact, that same person made some very forthright, transparent recommendations at that meeting as she does tonight. I know this person for many years, and I have to admit, I think she would be a great council member for District 3 and this community. Thank you, Peggy. I'm proud to be a friend and a supporter. I'm sorry to report tonight that not one other council member, including my own district, I never believed would happen, responded. So your statement to write to you all about our problems with concerns is in fact a farce. And although I'm not gonna ridicule anyone, I'm requesting publicly, again, for the 10th time this year, to turn the comments section on, on YouTube, and you will hear from hundreds of people that are gonna tell you what they think. Get your thick skin on and let us hear from the public. Being on council means you're regarded to be respected, a free thinker, an independent character, so the public can and should trust you. If you depend on an attorney to tell you what to do and what not to do, maybe we should just have an attorney run the county and no council members. But I don't want an attorney that tells you to be careful about what you say because it can be brought up in a foyer and be brought out in the public scrutiny. You all need to do your best, and if this is your best, stay home. You have a job. It is your job to clean this mess up and get, like John said, and I've said 100 times, we need a fire department. We don't have one. Hire a fire department to prevent and protect the homes and lives of people in this community. And get the services running efficiently, police, EMS, that's your job, that's your number one job. The county collects taxes specifically to provide the citizens with life-saving services. That's it, that's your only job. And report to us what you have done, what you're intending to do, and when this problem be solved. Don't worry about future economics in the county. There won't be a county to worry about if that's what you're worried about. And tonight, just to prove my point, give me one second. I'd like to ask the people in the audience to raise their hand if they think we need a fully-functioned fire department. Just put your hands up if you think we need a fire department, a fully-functioned fire department. The people that don't want to put their hand up for whatever reason, your house is gonna burn down. Thank you.
Randy Bright.
Well, I was somewhat encouraged by at least an attempt to save some money out of the county council's budget. I was very discouraged by the process itself, and it kind of goes to the bigger picture of what I intended to talk about here. My first speech focused on priorities and goals for the county as it relates to the budget. We have no vision for the county, and that last exchange demonstrated our lack of total vision. Instead of trying to piecemeal saving some county money with a complicated ordinance policy, whatever, why not just take the bloated budget of $360,000 last year of county council, take it down to 25% or even down to $271,000 like you spent two years ago? Instead of a complicated expense policy, just eliminate expenses and operate off the aforementioned budget I mentioned. And you're gonna say, well, we're gonna get short some money. Well, if, you're already highly paid, but quite frankly, if you cut the budget by 25% from what it was last year, you guys figure out how to do that without a complicated system. Just don't get reimbursed for expenses. Put it into salary if you got that room. Cut out that stupid newsletter that they wasted $20,000 on last year. You guys figure it out. Make it simple, and that should be a theme throughout the whole county. Make it simple, make it easy, make it less complicated. The point is, our county needs to operate on a more efficient and effective basis. This would be a step in the right direction. Wait until the budget time, then do your calls, but make it efficient, make it easy to execute and make it, ask Laura, that would be a lot less work on the county office, that would be a lot less work for you if all you got was your salary and you moved on, and it still would be enough to cover it. And we'd still save money. It's a win, make it simple. Make it simple, that should be a theme throughout the county. Make it simple, make it easy, save money, become more efficient, save taxpayer money. Serve taxpayers better. That should be a general theme. We don't have that vision. I encourage you to have it. And within that theme, of course, as previously mentioned, fire, all first responders prioritize. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Now we are down to county council time. Any council members wish to be heard?
Yeah, I don't remember from my previous time on council, this, the title on the ordinance, that that's only, cannot be, can't get an explanation until the second-
Yes, sir.
-reading, that's correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, I forgot that, so my bad. Anyway, so we'll do that next time to get clarification. And just for the record, I never, in my previous time, and I won't do it this time, asked or received expense reimbursement for anything. But also from talking about the animal shelter, I don't know if all of y'all have been to look at it, but it is deplorable, and it does, it needs attention, and we need to find a way somehow. So I agree with that, but that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members?
I do.
I just want to thank the ones that give comment during the public comment section. I think it's worth listening to. And Mr. Bright, I agree with you, take your salary and go on home if that's not enough. You knew what the salary was when you took it. I mean, you know, we don't need all this other stuff. Just take your salary, be done with it. You knew it when you took it, and you don't get paid to go to work, other people don't. But yes, fire, EMS, and police protection should be our top priority, and I've said that from the get-go, that has got to happen. The one gentleman said that, that was only one fireman at Jenkinsville, he's got one more than we got in Feasterville, you know? We have zero in Feasterville. And so I would be happy with one in Feasterville, but we got a lot of work to do, and we're only a month and a half. You know, don't shoot me, I'm only a month and a half here, and we're gonna all work together and try to make things better for this county. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like a monthly report on the town of Windsboro fees that they're paying for garbage transfer. I also want to know the comparison for the Morgan Law Firm versus the Borkin Law Firm, Borkin and Davis. Also, I want to go on record by saying that I'm against any tax hike or mileage or budget That's all.
Any other council member? Well, I'd just like to say, I want to thank everyone that came tonight and spoke to council. We do value your remarks and your concerns. We will continue to work hard and do what is best for Fairfield County. Also want to say I thank you to Ms. Ford that was here, that retired with the county, and Mr. Lee Haney. Your dedication to Fairfield County and being longtime employees is something we need in Fairfield County, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate Ms. Ford. Now we are down to, there is no executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
All opposed?